April 30th, 2019 Select Board Meeting. This meeting is being recorded.
Good evening, folks. Right now is our time for public comment. Should anyone have anything they would like to say? For their record, please state their name and address. Again.
Okay. Am I the only public comment?
You can go first, ma'am, sure.
Okay.
The room is full, but just, you know, you raise your hand first, we'll let you go.
Um, my name's Maureen Shay. Um, I live at 180 Biden Hill Road, but I also own Red Riding Husbasket, which is one of the Congamon Road. Um, I brought a letter today with kind of, that I put together of my feelings about the Congamon Road construction, so I'm gonna keep each. I brought three copies, so Doug's gonna have to share, I guess.
We'll make sure he gets one.
Yeah. Oh, that's fine. And I have one just to read, um, that I'd like to read into, um, the record.
Sure.
Um, I know that we had just discussed that this was discussed last week, um, so I just kinda, as you said, put my thoughts together, and I will read it, and then maybe we can discuss what can be done. Um, it says, "Dear Select Board, I'm writing to express my concerns and discontent with the Congamon Road construction project. I've been trying to be optimistic about the project and see that the final product could be great for the town, but my optimism is wearing thin. I own Red Riding Husbasket, which is currently a labor of love, since my loans are high and the rising cost of minimum wage is causing me financial stress. I am already struggling to compete with automated cashiers in cheap quality food in area restaurants, as well as the difference in minimum wage between Mass and Connecticut, just a few tenths of a mile down the road. I follow the letter of the law and run an upstanding establishment known for quality and customer service. This type of business takes a lot of money and needs repeated customers. My customers are not coming because of the horrible road conditions. To add insult to injury, I sometimes can't even get in my business's parking lot because work crews park whichever way they want blocking prime parking spots. I have been supportive of the crew and police officers, allowing them to use my restaurant facilities whenever they like as a courtesy. Yes, um, I drive by these same people multiple times a day, drinking coffee from Dunkin' Donuts and McDonald's. This not only speaks volumes to my statement about trying to compete with larger chain restaurants, but it also frustrates me that my generosity I am extending is not being returned, especially by those who I know are local to the Southland community. I feel as if the town is turning a blind eye to this extremely poor managed project. I am left to figure out how to juggle all these challenges in the dark. I never know what I will drive up of harm, but I know, I now, I know I will come up to expect that it won't be good. I first learned about the project when I applied for a liquor license a few years ago, and I was approached by Randy Brown, who is present, who informed me that part of my current parking lot was going to become part of the bike trail. The only reason Randy came to see me was this removal of parking spots could have caused an issue with my liquor license, not to tell me about the Congamon Road project specifically. After this conversation, I attended a meeting at the town hall for residents to discuss the proposed sewer project on Congamon Road, and this is where I learned most of what I know about the road project. Ironically, the sewer project did not get approved. I have never been approached by anyone from the town of Southland to tell me about changes to the timeline, the project didn't start when first expected, which end they're going to dig up first, when the trail will be dug up, and if it will be close to bikers. Bikers are one of my largest customer groups, weather permitting. The lack of transparency is frustrating. Not knowing what's going on and endless rumors, I could tell you a lot of doozies, worsens the situation. I see this frustration all, also being reflected on social media by area residents. Besides being a business owner, I'm a mother of four, wife, and longtime resident of Southland. It hurts my business, and therefore hurts my family, that residents now resent taking Congamon Road. I understand roadwork involves digging up a road, but the conditions of the road is unacceptable. Many roadwork projects lay down temporary road, be it blacktop or gravel. I am afraid to stop my car at times because the erosion from the amount of trees removed and mud might cause my car to get stuck. I don't have the option of avoiding Congamon Road, and therefore my car is getting battered daily, and soon I will have to pay to fix my suspension. I feel like I'm facing a David and Goliath situation, trying to keep my small, local business afloat, and the town is not doing anything for the businesses on Congamon Road. We have been hung out to dry as a casualty of this project. Instead of telling you I am upset, or instead of just telling you I'm upset, I would like to propose some ideas of how to change the situation before my debt and other businesses in the area get in over our heads. I would like to see a temporary blacktop or gravel to help make the paved roads more manageable for people to drive. And I know we've talked about making it more manageable with ways of grading it and moving the poles and whatnot. Dealing with the runoff created by the large amount of spring rain and tree removal performed in the fall, having a way of communicating the public about the timeline of the project and the progress made, knowing where we are headed, could really ease some of the rumors. The information on the town website is vague at best. The information should then be publicized via robocall signs and email. Create lawn signs that could go on the trail or side of the road, reminding passersby to support small business during construction. These signs could also be used on the trail to inform out-of-town bikers of the condition of the bike trail and how they can find out more. Have a town representative check in with the construction company and hold them accountable. I drive Congamon Road multiple times a day, and rarely see a Southland face at the worksite besides one or two police officers. Thank you for listening and being proactive about this problem.
Thank you. Wonderful.
So, I don't know if Matt Jolie will show up, but I'm hoping he will be here as well, and I mean, I don't want to speak for him, but I have a hunch he has some feelings about what's going on.
I think every neighbor down there does, quite honestly. And under public comment, we usually don't talk back to the person.
Oh, okay.
But it's fine. Um, there is people there every day screaming to those guys. I don't want to torture Randy.
He's been doing it.
But, um, no, no, and it's all good, and you're not signaling anyone out, but we are extremely frustrated.
Okay.
You're not alone in this. Um, if we could pull the bond today, we would.
We don't have a bond.
And we would have someone to finish it, but that unfortunately is a state project, a state deal. It went to the lowest bidder, and, and, you know, whether we get sued or not, I don't care, but they're just useless. They absolutely are useless. And then when Randy goes to even talk to them, they're disgruntled with him or any of us. They, you know, it's their deal. And if you talk to the state, they go, they go, "Yeah, we know what we have, but eh," you know, so everyone's upset. You know, Randy doesn't like getting phone calls every hour on the hour when it rains.
Oh, I know.
You know, and it's not against Randy, but, you know, then he calls Chris, and then Chris runs, we all run down to look, but we don't have the keys to their equipment. It's, it's, and then trying to get them to come out on a weekend, you're lucky if they're out five or six hours after your call. It's, it's just crazy, and they don't care. They just don't care who you are, who you think you are, what pool you think you have. They're, they're useless. And I'm, and I'm sure it's not higher up. It's unfortunately whoever Randy has to deal with most of the time. But, yeah, we're all disgusted, literally. It's, it's just...
And I know that doesn't fix anything, but it makes me feel better.
No, we're aware of it.
Like, I, I literally drive that road a couple times a day.
Yeah.
It's so disheartening.
It is. Doug Monklin's wife drives that road every day to go to bring her, their daughter to school. And, you know, beside, we get emails every day, I would just about say that.
Well, maybe what the board could do is just to, Randy, speak to Mass D O T and have them and the contractor come into a public informational update session at town hall.
Yeah, but that's...
Schedule something for the abutters so that they can, you know, get something, and maybe they can hand them out an update at the meeting, too.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, I heard rumors recently that they applied for a six-month extension on some part of it. I don't know. I'm praying it's just sidewalks.
Yeah.
You know, not the actual tar or first coat, base coat, whatever. And I don't, right, and I don't even know if that's real.
They're putting down course, are they putting down course in the next...
Yeah, they're starting to pave. They'll be paving in the next two weeks, hopefully.
Yeah.
But there's no extension. I've never heard of that.
No, no, I, but as I say, rumors are rumors, and, you know, they, they come across our table like there's no tomorrow.
But that's what I'm saying. The lack of transparency is so frustrating.
Yeah.
Because then I have customers that are like, "Well, I'm not, I'm just gonna find a different way, and I'm gonna now make it my habit." Like, you know what I mean?
Yep, and once you change your habit, it's tough to get them back. I know. I deal with it every day.
Just to emphasize, it's a state project.
Yeah.
But we did have, you know, when they told us in, just before winter, the road was in better shape than when they had started the project. That's, that was the answer. They actually sent an email saying that. But at least we got Randy involved, the chief of police, fire, so that we at least had them put up signs, lowered the speed limit, things of that nature. This, where they decided, uh, working with Randy and Dick Reynolds, our town engineer, they decided to start at that end and hopefully get that portion at least semi...
Settled.
Settled for the summer traffic, for boating and things like that, people going to the lake, which will help your business, the Franklin House, if something happens at Krabby Joe's, and, and to Congamon Pizza. So, so hopefully, as Randy said, that they're gonna at least put down a base coat in a couple of weeks on that portion.
We had a meeting a week ago about this issue.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
They asked, their schedule was within two to three weeks.
Right.
It was a week ago they were gonna start to...
And that depends on the weather. We all know that. You know, we've seen that happen on College Highway when the state did that project, and we saw it happen on 57 when the state did that project, too. So, but, but we hear ya, and it's, 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 I can't believe it, because we go to hearings. There are hearings before these projects begin. You know, when we get to a 25% stage, things like that, the state comes in, we had the hearing.
The abutters can come?
Where'd we have the hearing? Right, right in there. And all the state officials were out, and we did talk about the problems of the past, and they made all sorts of guarantees that we wouldn't have these problems. But I gotta agree with Mr. Dede. This, this particular firm takes the cake. Takes the cake. But you do have some good ideas here.
Yeah, we'll pass this on, absolutely.
And maybe we can work with Economic Development Commission. I know Randy does a very good job of getting information out, you know, uh, and if there's something, maybe he can work with Dennis to do something else. That's a possibility, you know, but they're, they're good ideas. We're pro-business, you know that.
No, I know, and I know that, and that's why I...
And I feel bad, you know, because when we saw the flooding down there, the first thing I said, "It's Easter weekend, it's killing these businesses."
Franklin House didn't even open.
Yeah.
They couldn't get, you couldn't get in their parking lot.
My husband got hit by a wake in his car, like, yeah. So, well, I appreciate that. Um, I know that Carl said that this could be passed along to the state, and do you want me to do that as well?
Abs, he can hand deliver it to them.
Believe me, don't bother mailing, this, this man can get it to them pretty quick.
But I would hand this over to that gentleman sitting right at the end there.
Here you go, young man, some more stuff to write about.
Absolutely.
And, uh, he could probably even get a couple of photographs in that picture front page tomorrow and emphasize the name of that construction firm.
That would be lovely.
A select board member gave me a couple photos that he took, so...
Excellent, excellent, but emphasize the name of that firm and where they're located.
Yeah.
Well, I thank you guys very much. As I had said before, I have a babysitter, so I'm gonna step out.
Yep, thank you.
Good luck with that, mom.
Thank you very much for hearing me. I appreciate being heard.
All right, have a good night. All right, this is a nice... Okay.
He's gonna pass those along, okay?
Yep, that's fine. All right, so up first is the payroll warrant.
No.
Is there an amended agenda? I'm sorry. We do. We truly do. But I'm gonna request my last week as chairman that there's no amended agenda.
That's ducks.
Just to say I was able to do something. I was able to accomplish one thing out of my term as chairman. All right, so payroll warrant, 1-9-2-4 dated 4/29/2019, in the amount of $220,993.60. And the next up is regular session minutes for 4/23/19.
So moved.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Work session minutes for 4/24/19.
So moved.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Then we have executive session in front of us for 4/23/19. Need a motion?
So moved.
I'll second that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Yep. All right. Invitation to Hampton County Opiate Meeting on 5/15/19. Right there. Hold on a second. Here, this is 4A in our thing. Oh, it's gonna be in Ludlow at the, uh...
Jail.
Administration building, yeah.
Okay.
And I know this has been an important topic for the board previously.
So we get, are we getting cuffed and stuffed when we go in there? Cause last time I was there, it didn't end well for me. So how, we're going through the front door this time? Yeah, okay.
I can't answer.
Yeah. I mean, that monitor bracelet's gone off. I mean, the scar's there, but...
We know how this, how important this is for you guys.
It is. It really, truly is.
Cause you've partnered with the police, and you've partnered with the...
Yeah.
The Hampton County DA's office, the sheriff's office in the past, Rotary.
Yeah.
Rotary, where the sheriff came out.
Right, so this is, this is something that's been very important for you in the past. That's why you wanna be able to be aware of it in, in the event that you want to attend.
I will grab the police chief and go with him. Okay, maybe I'll grab the fire chief, too. Yep, thank you. All right. FY20 transfer station rates. Dum, dum, dum.
Item 3A.
3A. Mr. Brown, how are you this evening?
Good, yourself?
I am, I'm all right, I guess. I'm all right. All right, so what are we thinking, sir?
Well, I, I guess the way I was thinking of ordering this was, uh, well, first, I summarize the last four years of...
Yes.
Revenue and expenses for transportation. You can see where the deficit is, right? So I guess the question for you is, you know, what, where are you comfortable at, you're running that deficit from? Um, keep in mind that, uh, well, I guess over the past year, it's been pretty stable, you know, there hasn't been much variation in that deficit.
No.
But keep in mind that, uh, the, uh, the recyclables...
It's all gonna change real quick here.
...impact us next year. Not this year, but next year.
Next year.
Plus your tenant rate's going up, right, Randy, too? The tenant rate of where we, we bring the regular revenues as well.
Close it by a dollar a ton.
Right, but it's, it's still going up. It's a couple thousand bucks, easily.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So we're gonna at least...
So between those two, I mean, here at this point, the recyclable rate, you know, those bids have not been in yet, but, I mean, at this point, I wouldn't be surprised if it's gonna be a $25,000 in debt on us.
Right.
You know, from, when that does come to that FY20. So, you know, I gave you a table of, if you increase the rates by, you know, 5, 10, 15, 20%, you know, what percent, you know, how much more revenue are we expected to bring in? So I guess, I guess the question goes back to my, you know, my initial point was, you know, how, what are you, what are you comfortable with running a deficit?
Right.
And if you want to, you know, decrease that, then you...
And do you know the percentage of regular stickers versus senior stickers?
Still about 50/50.
50/50, okay.
Really? Wow.
We're a grain community.
Well, Russ is a grain community, so...
Yeah. Okay.
What are you thinking, Russ?
I'm, I'm thinking that we're gonna have to do this probably multiple years. So I was thinking that 5% this year, and looking to a 5 or 10% next year, and probably 5 to 10% the third year, you know, because of recyclables.
Okay. So do you wanna just do it for the next four years and go up 5% each year? Or do you wanna go 5, 10? What do you want to do?
Well, I, I...
Let's be done with it now. Let's do a couple years.
We don't, yeah, but we don't know yet about the recyclables.
It's going up.
We know it's going up, but are we gonna be in that?
Well, if that's the case, I'd go up 10% this year then, quite honestly, cause we're at 100. So you're talking 10 bucks more. And then the seniors, you're, you know, do we touch the senior price, or do we need the senior price alone?
Yeah, you increase everything by 10%.
Right, so it'd be $5 for the seniors.
Right.
I would do 10% instead of the 5, cause we know it's gonna be a huge, it's $25,000 next year. I don't care for the year after, whenever our thing is done. It's gonna be all a 25.
Right.
So if we can get 15 of that earlier than later, it'll help us versus next year having to go up 15% cause we only did 5%.
Yeah.
That's just, you know, it's not, it's 10 bucks, it's not... How was he told about North Pond? "Joe, it's a cup of coffee." Russ, it's a cup of coffee.
Another cup of coffee.
It's just another, I haven't been drinking so much coffee in years.
All right, I'll make a motion for the 10%.
Yep, I, I, let's do it, but let's, let's be reality.
That's right. And we know it's gonna go up another increase next year, so we're not, nobody's kidding anybody.
No, 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 absolutely. All right.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Randy.
Sign that master version.
There are a couple of just minor points to kind of change, just to clarify what I identified on the bottom of the first page and the second page. Mostly minor things, the only...
Increase on mattresses to 15 instead of 5.
So that was because we had a grant. So two years ago, we were paying, we were charging $16 per mattress. We got a grant offset, the bulk of the cost of D E P, that grant house expired, so now we gotta go back to...
And it's still inexpensive to get rid of a mattress if they don't take it when you swap it out anyways. You know, by the time you cut it up and try to burn it, and then, that's 15 bucks.
When I did mine, mattress...
This is still less than some companies that charge you $25 or $30.
10 bucks. They took the old mattress away.
Right, right.
I mean, they picked up and took it away, so, I mean, you can't beat it.
You can't beat it.
So we encourage people to, to, uh...
Work, work with the seller.
Work with the seller.
Well, that's good, so you're able to get rid of your mattress. You weren't sleeping outside anymore. So that worked out well for you.
Well, I'm still sleeping outside.
Sleeping outside, no more mattress.
But the doghouse is, you know, has a nice, comfortable new mattress, all right.
It's sweet, yeah.
He must have a heck of a doghouse. All right, so you voted if you could just sign that one?
Yeah. Anything else you wanna talk about?
I think other things, just more administrative stuff.
All right. How are we doing with our spring help? We getting ready to look at that?
That's another item.
I signed them on your bucket today, yeah.
Imagine that. All right, did you sign your, uh, form there for the 10%? Nope.
You've got the original or...
Right here. Yep, right here. Sign it.
Okay.
I don't want you to have to come back tomorrow.
Dated.
Yeah, you gotta clerk it, man.
Clerk it. 10%.
Yeah.
That's right, the clerk is not in attendance.
No.
4:30.
But I'm sure he will be listening to this meeting.
Mayday tomorrow, folks.
So you take that, cause we signed it. All right, sir. And the next part of this was, I have stormwater. But let's talk about your, do we need to talk about your summer help?
Yeah.
Okay, go right ahead.
Well, I, a couple things. I want to, uh, I think you've ever met Connor Roy, who, I'd like to bring in on another engineering interview this summer.
That little high school kid?
Yes.
Great kid.
Yes, played basketball, had to tour his ACL.
Yeah.
At his end of the year.
Goods we have him for the summer. Yeah.
But great kid, is again, going through an engineering degree, Virginia Tech. Uh, but I wanna help, I want his help to help administer the end of work.
Did he get in to Virginia Tech?
Yes, he did, yeah.
When's he, when does he have to leave for school?
He'll have to go back into probably...
Mid-August.
Mid-August, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's got a truck there. Having done that, I know what it's like.
Yeah. Well, he's expressed an interest in working with us, and I'd like to, you know, bring him on. Like, he's a great kid.
Yeah.
Good experience for him.
Yeah. And you worked well with him?
Oh, yeah, yeah. He's rolled all of us, yeah.
Yeah, I'm good with it.
Yep. And that'll help with your process of the stormwater pieces of it.
I mean, I need, I need bodies, I need physical, I need help. So, I need, I need, I need that help.
Do I dare ask what rate we're gonna start him at? Because he's a young, inexperienced kid.
I was thinking probably 15 an hour.
Oh, I love you. Yep, sold.
$5.15 an hour?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. In your world, yeah. Yeah, yeah, great. Absolutely, Randy.
And then the next part of that was, uh, our usual summer help.
Yes.
Which we do get every year. Just wanna go out and advertise for that.
Okay.
And I think we do need a rate increase on that, we do need to increase the minimum wage.
Yeah, they're aware of that.
Right. So we'll set the rate for them, or you'll just look at that?
$10, I mean, that's fine.
Those will just come to us as a season.
Yep, that's fine. Okay.
So you've already prepared the letter going back to, uh, the EPA, yes, D E P?
So you're moving on?
Yeah, I think we are. We all kind of have a package together.
So, yeah, we met a couple weeks ago, and, um, you know, as you recall, we submitted the NOI. They didn't like some of the dates. We talked about how to address that, and I think the response I got from the board was, uh, we wanna send a letter and saying, "Here's what we're doing. We're gonna have to pay $1,000 for the FY20 budget. You know, this is our best, good faith effort to meet the terms of permanent." So I kinda identified that in, in this letter.
Are they local that you're dealing with? Cause we'd love for them to come to a meeting and sit down with us.
Uh, EPA, so they're in Washington.
Okay, so there's no local branch or dealer?
Oh, well, don't they have a Boston office? They, they have a Boston regional office, yeah.
But, so, and then there is a Mass D E P representative, his name is Fred Sivian. Um, I could...
Could we like Fred to come in some night? We'd love to have him come in.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, not to torture him, but just to really express our concerns and funding that we don't have.
I will, I'll try to arrange that.
Yeah, I would love for that.
All right, so you're okay with Randy, um, working with Robin and put this letter to form on our letterhead for Joe to sign off as chairperson?
Yeah, yeah, maybe we'll get all the lawsuits, so...
Okay.
Yeah. That's fine.
All right, so I'll have this, this all according with Robin.
Yep. I mean, I know I've talked this up with you before, but when I'm sitting up there in the Hilltowns where I work in the winter, it doesn't really affect them because their population is, is much lower. What is that fine, you know, can we get our population down enough that maybe it doesn't affect us, Russ?
They might have, they might not even have any pace in some of them without flows.
Uh, based on population density.
Density, that's what it is, yeah.
Were you suggesting something?
I was just saying. I would hate to find out that we're 78 people over the number, and, and you're gonna blow a million dollars.
Well, I saw this, uh, episode on Game of Thrones, eliminated a lot of people.
I'm just wondering what that number was. That's all. Cause if we're really close, we'd have to have that discussion.
Game of Thrones has got some, some analogy to this thing.
Yeah, I, I've never watched Game of Thrones, but, um...
Yeah, try it.
Okay, I just threw it out there. I was just wondering. All right. Anything else for Randy? We talked about, yeah, DPW, we're good there. Awesome. Well, thank you for your time, sir.
Thank you.
That road is a mess, though, that Congamon. It's crazy.
Like, there is some, like I said, some like, aside here, all construction is disruptive.
It, it is.
I'll speak to Michael.
And I get why we had to close off the, you know, the grates, I get where the drains, you know, we all get it, but it didn't help that we got so much rain in such a quick time either, but jeez, what a mess.
Right.
You know, imagine if, um, if, uh, Krabby Joe's was open.
It's like the sardine the last time.
You know, I, Friday, I took that road just so I can drive it, so when I hear the complaints, and they dropped you in Krabby Joe's parking lot. That's how you, you know, I was just like, this is real? You know, I don't know Krabby Joe's, but just like, who would even allow this? Thank God they're closed.
They called us, well, PD called us on Friday afternoon, Friday evening, you know.
Right.
"We're gonna shut the road down, we're gonna detour around, you know, Farborough Beach neighborhood."
Yeah.
And it worked.
No, it worked, yeah.
Over the night, you know.
This was Friday morning, though, I was getting dropped on Krabby Joe's parking lot, which, I, I get it, it's not open, but I would never allow all that, you know, but Joe's such a nice guy, probably doesn't care. All right, moving on. Thank you, Randy. I've said enough, apparently. All right, FinCon Reserve for Legal Services.
Blue form.
Blue form, $16,000.
Yeah.
And, uh...
And I have, I have contacted some other boards to have them look at sweeping their accounts to contribute to future legal costs.
Yeah.
So those are, we're looking at that, too.
Yeah, that's true, cause we kinda do stuff for all the boards.
Planning ConCom, CPC. We've done this before in the past.
Yeah, yeah. All right, I need a motion.
Make a motion.
I'll second that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
There you go, sir. Next, uh, planning board.
Yep, it's just to let you see the planning board did make a positive recommendation for the zone change coming up.
Okay.
And the warrant article was being finalized by, uh, the petitioner and Ben Coyle and Mark Begley.
Okay.
Okay, this is just, it's, it's an FYI because it, this is something the planning board needs to, um, discuss when they go to town meeting floor.
Sure.
Okay?
Sure. You're probably here for public comment, which was at six thirty, but I'll tell you it's your lucky day. State your name and address for the record?
Uh, Matthew Jolie, Seven Oak Street.
Raise your right hand. Swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Alright. You got the floor for two minutes. Go right ahead, sir.
I just wanted to address the, uh, work on how long, I'm sure you.
Oh, absolutely, but.
You know, my, I guess more of a question than comment. Is there someone in town that is responsible for overseeing the, how they leave the, the condition they have?
Yeah, so I'll give you my version, which isn't always accurate. So it's a state project, as you know, right?
I have the, I've been trying to get ahold of the field officer.
Right, right. So we deal, Randy Brown is our, our DPW director. Yeah, and, um, no one really tells us every day what's really going on. You know, when you call because you can't get through the road, we call Randy, Randy calls his assistant Chris, and you know, the, the food chain starts. Um, they're supposed to always leave it in perfect condition. Of course they are every night, you know, we, we get it. They're, they're, uh, uh, they're just one of the worst companies to ever deal with. And it's the lowest bidder. We didn't really have a choice, but I'll tell you, if their name comes up on the, one of our sheets in the next few years that I'm here, I guess we'll go for the next bidder up, even if it's an extra three or four hundred thousand. And then have someone else tell us we can't do that 'cause he's not the lowest bid, you know, that guy's not the lowest bidder. But their equipment's barely ones that is there. It's, it's a mess. As you know, more than we know. We just go by there when we get the phone calls.
Well, I mean, a case in point is they dug up, excavated the stretch right in front of my, my shop.
Yeah.
For the fourth time since April.
Right. And you're right, same material getting picked up, going away, and other material coming back, but it's, it's.
The fourth time in a month.
Yeah.
Uh, so, and I, and I understand that there's disruptions and I understand that it's progress, but it seems like we're taking three steps back and one step forward.
Right.
Um, then I guess I wanted to know what my request is, if there is any.
I can give you a sandwich board. You can go out there and where we had passed selectmen do that, and you can walk up and down the street all you want, but, um, I, I really don't know.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't help.
I'd pull the bond tomorrow if we could and, and we'd finish it, but that's not even doable, right?
So, there's no.
We can complain like we've been doing and we are doing our part of screaming, but I, I don't wanna say it falls on deaf ears, 'cause I'm sure the state person comes out, talks to Randy and promises us the moon and they're aware of it and they're disappointed too, but it doesn't help the headache.
Doesn't help, yeah.
Randy has told us supposedly within two more weeks, they should have some kind of hard pack on that surface. Supposedly. I don't believe, I believe Randy got told that. I don't believe the guy that told Randy, but.
I don't either.
I, I don't. But I mean, it'd be great if that does happen. The thought was to get it done before the summer boating season started and blah, blah, blah. So they're cutting it real close. If it actually happens.
But, uh, we did have, uh, Mo here a few minutes ago.
Yeah, we had to talk this morning.
And she had a, a couple of good ideas and, uh, we're gonna reach out to the, our chairman of Economic Development Commission to see what they can do. She was talking about signs or just trying to promote people to support the businesses down in that area, uh, as much as they possibly could, you know, it's.
That, I, you know, as much as that, that would be great.
It doesn't solve the problem.
No, my customers, I, I ran into one of the dump today and, uh, one of my great customers, he's a kind of works there, and he's like, I'm so sorry I've gotten put down.
Yeah.
The road's terrible.
Yeah.
Yeah. You're not kidding?
No, and maybe I appreciate it, but.
Yeah.
It doesn't take my bills.
No, no, it doesn't.
Yeah, so as much as.
Hopefully when they get the.
They can have a hundred times, but someone's gonna, you know.
Well, hopefully when they get the base coat down, we can still promote it, let people know, okay, we got a base coat down there. It's safe to go back.
Something.
We'll try to do our best. It's not much, but, you know, like Joe says, it's a state project.
But we're all frustrated. You know, our phones ring, our emails come through.
Oh, I've no doubt.
Yeah, we, we're well aware of it.
Yeah, I'm sure I'm the only person today that called you, but.
Yeah. It's actually at a trade show and we have a mutual friend that says, I just bought a house across from this whole mess, you know, and in a corner. He's a broker for, uh, where was I, PFG?
Oh, yeah, yeah, um.
Yeah, yeah, you know, but here he is. He sold this house over by me on Foster. Um, took three years to sell and he bought it in a little corner. He's thrilled. And he's like, I, I, I got a little car. Because I don't know how I get through it every time. Yeah. We're aware of it unfortunately.
Just keep calling the state guy and.
Yeah. I, I don't know. Tell him not to park in your parking lot. I know, you know, what do you do?
And that was the other thing too, I mean.
Right.
I don't wanna make, I don't wanna stop progress, but there's no room for my customers.
Right. Yeah. It'd be one thing if you saw, saw progress, but there's no room for your customers and they're digging up the same thing for the third time. Yeah. Yeah, very frustrating.
Thank you for your time, everybody. I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, you're fine.
No. We didn't want you just sitting there, listen to us and then come at the end.
Yeah.
You know, you've suffered enough.
Yes.
Thank you. Have a great night, everybody.
Alrighty, take care. Sorry about that. Alright. So what was up next? We were talking about the zone change. That was all set.
Yeah, uh, the next item is, um, uh, something I put on the agenda, the verbal discussion of temporary building inspector stipend.
Yes, yes.
And I, uh, met with, uh, Bob Sullivan, who's filling in on that role, and we negotiated, uh, two hundred and fifty dollar a week.
Yep.
Stipend, and it would be from the first week in April because Art is out and he continues to be out, so this is a reasonable number to backfill him with all the inspections that he's working on with, um, Melissa and the other inspectors.
Yep.
While Art is doing the E permitting from another location.
Yep.
So I'd like the boards, um, permission to do that number as of April first per week.
So moved.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye. We thank him very much.
Yeah, he's doing quite a, he's doing a real nice job, actually. It keeps a book up there. As Melissa says, he's old school. Everything's written down in a book of everything he's ever done. And it's, uh, you know, we think it's just a quick inspection, but nothing's a quick inspection anymore, right?
No.
So.
You, you can't, can't mess up an inspection anymore.
No, so he's been very thorough.
It's not a walkthrough.
No, it's not a walkthrough.
Like a drive-by.
Right. Okay.
Next item is the notification of the hemp growers license.
It's the hemp growers license.
So you see the letter in front of you?
Yeah. Yeah. And this is just a pastor. We have nothing to do with it, right?
No. Just a notification, right?
Nice, yeah.
No, but I think it was, it's such a, you know, important issue that I wanted to make sure you knew about it. We did forward copies to other municipal depart, departments.
Yep, and I've been getting, I've been receiving quite a few calls about local farmers growing hemp. And it's tied up something to do with the, it didn't pass legislation, but I think they're actually speaking about it today again.
Down in Boston?
Down in Boston. And the biggest issue is if the property is, is a sixty-one A, Russ?
I think it's APR.
APR. If it's APR, um, the, since it hasn't passed, they're kinda not allowing them to do it, or the local authority can allow it.
Uh, that's interesting, 'cause usually when you start dealing with APIs, that there may be federal dollars in it, and then the federal dollars may have linkages to federal policies on drug control.
Right, and I think that's.
So.
Where that is. And a sixty-one A different than the other?
Sixty-one A is just, it's agricultural, but i- it's just for an, uh, an assessor point of view, you know?
Reduce taxation and return for the status of the land.
Right, and then if you ever sold the land, you'd have to, uh, pay back. Now it's five years.
Rollback, five-year rollback.
It used to be three years, now it's five years.
There is an issue there too, I believe, with the sixty-one A and the hemp, where that's where the state is getting involved.
Yeah.
To clean that up, so.
Right, they, and.
Yeah, because they're all laws apparently, right?
Well, it, there's restrictions to what, especially on APR. I mean, you can't have horse farms on APR.
Right.
You, you can't, some guy wanted to do weddings and have a, a, a horse to drive around.
Yep, that, the mud bogs, all this other stuff, yeah.
Right, and they, they have all these restrictions.
The haunted things.
I know there's been lawsuits filed, you know, things like that, because agriculture is always changing.
Yes.
And, uh, even though people have agreed to the terms, I mean, with APR, you still have to farm it in perpetuity.
Right.
And if you're not making any money, it's tough to farm.
Yeah.
Well, like what we're doing now, we're, we're, we're farming the sun. Right, solar farms, right.
Right.
So.
Understood. Alright, so that's that.
So if it ever gets down to this level, I certainly would be supportive of anything that supports agriculture in the town of Southwood.
Yeah, my understanding is it was getting down to this level as far as the right to farm deal, but until it comes in front of us, I told them, you know, we've never heard one yet.
Right.
They were trying to say that we had heard one at one particular time, and I said, no, not that I'm aware of, but put it in front of us, so. Alright, then I have, I have seven A here. Uh, but that, that host agreement word, that's all on hold, right?
Right, this is the last.
Yep, yep, that's fine.
And then we have some old business items.
Yep, and the proclamation we already did, okay, so old business.
And we have to adopt.
Right, we have it right here. Okay.
After last week's work session.
So moved.
Everybody has to adopt the fiscal year twenty, uh, budget, and this is, as you can see last night, the finance committee unanimously approved it, uh, to accept it as presented, and you have the different values there of the town EMS, sewer and water, uh, for a grand total of fourteen million, two hundred ninety-seven thousand, six sixty-six. And that becomes a one singular warrant article.
Right.
Which is, and it's separate from the school assessment, all the other things that have other dollar amounts to them.
Alright, need a motion?
So moved.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, and then.
We need to sign this, Carl, or no? Are we good with?
Sure.
Anything else for old business?
Yeah, the, uh, special town meeting, uh.
Yep, that's the next thing in front of us.
Basically, you're gonna be, um, signing those off in the next couple of days. They're finishing being put to form. You've gone over them several meetings in a row.
Yeah.
And it, it looks at this juncture that they will not be, um, at least on this particular posting, a warehouse project.
Okay.
On this one. It could be a future meeting. So, uh, council will be making most changes and, um, putting the warrants to final form and approving them to form for your sign-off in the next two or three days for a Friday posting.
Okay.
And Mr. Mogul will be coming through town in between business trips to do so.
Alright.
Any more questions about that?
Well, everyone worked very hard.
'Cause we've gone through those two, I suppose.
Yep. Okay. Alright, that's FYI. Alright. And what else for old? Nothing?
Um, I'm opening up surplus bids tomorrow.
Bids tomorrow. Gonna clean out Randy's yard over there, give him some more room?
And buy the police, yeah. Yeah, do that tomorrow.
Wonderful. How was the tractor show, Randy? Did you attend it?
It was good. I was there for an hour or so. Yeah, I had another clip, a clip then afterwards, but it was good. Good, uh, I left, I guess after I left, it was, uh, bigger crowds showed up. Um, we were disappointed in the number of vendors. I thought there'd be more, but.
I went by about one o'clock to do a Westfield State project, and I thought it looked pretty busy.
Not, not the whole block, though.
Yeah.
It was still kinda a little chilly.
Yeah, it was chilly.
Yeah, I was there at one, there was, what was good, a lot of kids.
Lot of kids.
A lot of kids. And I think if it had been warmer.
Right.
You know, uh, it, it, it would've been a lot better. But, I mean, hey, that's the problem with outdoor events.
Oh, yeah.
The weather, weather, weather.
My, uh, my club, my, our four age leader, so we, our club was there, a couple of kids showed up, had the baby goats with them and chicken.
I think I saw it in the pit, the paper, the baby, the goats.
Nice.
Cute little goats that we drove.
Alright, so no more old? How about, is this, go ahead.
Only thing under old business, if we could, uh, take down the donate life flags tomorrow.
Oh, yeah.
You know, and make sure they're.
Yep, excellent timing.
Cleaned, you know, and, and stored properly.
And we have new ones for next year, right, Ron?
And we got some new ones.
We got at least three.
We got new ones, so.
Okay. And I guess this is under old business. Um, it has to do with the, uh, two hundred and fiftieth.
Yes.
Um, as you know, we were invited to put a float in the, uh, Westfield.
Yes.
Celebrating the three hundred and fiftieth. And we're in the final process of putting it together. And we're apparently need, uh, about twelve hundred dollars more. Um, will, that will come out of our budget.
Yeah.
But we would, this would necessitate a vote of the board of selectmen tonight so that we could do a special warrant to get the, uh, vendor paid so we could finish this, 'cause the parade is in about, what, two weeks or three weeks?
I put my paperwork in today. It's one.
Oh, for the one in Westfield?
The one in West, yeah.
May nineteenth.
Right, so, uh, yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we do a special.
Cause we're, it wasn't a warrant tomorrow?
For payables?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we will do something.
For assembling it, usually it's not getting submitted, you wanna like even faster.
Right, and I talked to accounting today and they said if we, because Laura was out.
Yeah.
If we took a vote tonight and instructed them to do a special payroll, uh, payable.
Payable.
Warrant that they would be able to get this money to the vendor, because he's gonna produce a proper bill, not this.
Oh, understood.
And, uh, we can get that money and finalize this so that the, uh, float is ready for the parade.
I'll second that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that's coming from two fiftieth committee money?
Right, right. Thank you.
Do I, should I keep that in the meantime?
Absolutely.
I, yes.
Because this way they can stop creating the warrant?
Correct.
Yeah.
And then also, I guess this would also be under old business. Uh, once again, the Better Angel Alliance of Hand and County is asking if they could, uh, we'd sponsor the use of, uh, the land use room for this Sunday.
Sure.
From, uh, about four to five thirty.
And who would be, would, who would be letting? So you'll be the sponsor?
Right.
Okay, that's fine.
Yep, so I can, yeah.
Okay.
You got keys and everything? You know, it works?
Yeah. And that's all I had.
Alright, new business.
Nothing tonight.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't even know where to start. Carl?
No.
Charlie's got his hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry. You turn this way.
I have two items. Um, May sixth, I've been requested by National Weather, the hur, National Hurricane Center in National Weather out of, uh, Boston to represent Southwood as the first storm rated community, and they would like to know if there's any other town officials.
You sent me an email on that, right?
Yeah, I believe Doug already answered.
Yes, Doug did answer. I wouldn't be able to make it for the day, unfortunately.
I will be attending, and I have a question. Which vehicle should I take, or should I take my personal vehicle, which? Because this is in North Kingston, Rhode Island, Quonset Air Station, and, uh, it's a nine fifteen in the morning.
Are you saying our vehicles aren't capable?
Well, we are, I mean, obviously in the budget, we are.
We're gonna, Charlie, we're going in the right direction, it's just not gonna be there when you need it.
Right.
So, take your own vehicle.
Right.
And we'll pay the mileage. Absolutely.
And tolls.
And tolls, yeah.
Nineteen for the, uh, VIP meeting and the presentations. And then, uh, I have gotta be back here by six o'clock. So it's probably a two and a half, three hour drive, 'cause there's no easy way to get there.
No.
Nope.
No, there isn't.
Nope.
Alright, sir.
Thank you very much, Charlie.
Thanks for attending, and go ahead.
The other item I have is, last October, I received a, uh, grant for the town of two thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars.
Yep.
And part of it was for, uh, the EOC equipment that has failed and has to be replaced. And the other is for observation cameras. And Carl and I have, uh.
Yeah, that's a later issue. We're going in.
Well, we will discuss with tonight in executive.
Okay.
Yep, not a problem.
That's what you're here.
Not a problem. So that's all we have for new business? You're good?
Yep, yep.
Alright, folks, so we're gonna end this meeting and go into an executive session. Oh, whoa. Whoa, hold on.
I apologize.
I accept your apology, Russ.
Under old business. And this is in concern of North Pond. Uh, when we had our.
Russ, we've already approved North Pond.
I know.
It's only another cup of coffee. You're up to two today.
When we had our meeting with Franklin Land Trust, uh, Community Preservation, Conservation, all the different state agencies and, and we had people on tele, teleconferencing from Boston.
And they brought the donuts? And you brought the donuts?
Actually Franklin Land Trust brought the donuts.
Were they stale? No, I heard rumors that they were stale outside, but not those donuts.
Anyways, uh, at that meeting, one of the issues that came up was the fact that, uh, this parcel had once been a, a business operation of, of, uh, different cottages, and, and we were told
I have pictures on my wall of the old facilities, yes.
And they were also told that they sold gasoline there.
They did.
Okay, so when we talked about this in the twenty-one E, uh, this was mentioned. Uh, matter of fact, one person, I believe it was our conservation coordinator, said, well, that's just rumors, and my response to that was it didn't matter whether it was rumors or not, that the town of Southwood would be looking to spend in excess of three million dollars. And because there were, was an operating business there
Yeah.
and potential contamination.
They're supposed to do a full twenty-one E, did they do it?
I
Or did they do that look-at-the-land theory one?
We, when I got the twenty-one E, when I asked Carl, because, um, the conservation coordinator said at my open space hearing that it was done, and I said, that isn't what I was told, or from emails, I didn't believe that. And I asked Carl, and Carl said, send me an email, I sent him an email, and next thing I know, we got a twenty-one E historical that was
That's not what I asked for.
And I read it, and immediately noticed that there was no mention
Yeah, no, 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 no.
of any, any potentially, uh, buried underground, uh, storage facilities for gasoline.
Right.
So, uh, needless to say, I sent an email to Franklin Land Trust that, that I didn't believe this twenty-one E, uh, covered all the areas that we had discussed.
They're well aware of what we wanted.
And the, uh, the gentleman, that firm who did it gave me a call that night, um, he was a little upset, because no one had ever told him about it. So he pulled back his twenty-one E historical
Yeah.
and told them that we would be continuing the process, and that, uh, this would be looked into. And I'm, I hope there's nothing there.
I don't think there is, but, but I don't wanna
Right.
'Cause then we own it.
Right.
And for four or five or three million, whatever that beautiful number is, we own it.
Right.
It's just due diligence, we would do it anywhere else.
Right.
So, uh, and as I was told at that meeting, believe it or not, that's our children's drinking water. So they can do a goddamn twenty-one either way they're supposed to. It's just stupid, why, why are we having this conversation? Who told them not to do it that way?
I don't know.
'Cause
I don't know. All I know, it's going to be done correctly.
Right, some soil samples, i- and I'm sure it's all clean, but just do their due diligence, we have to on everything we do.
Uh, I mean, I, as a businessperson
That's crazy.
any bank where you were borrowing money, and there was the potential of any contamination would require you
Right.
to do a full twenty-one E
Correct.
before they would loan you the money.
I, I'm just more aggravated that fifteen years from now, we're, we're probably not dead and buried, but we're pretty close. That some kid stumbles across something, you're like, oh, it's an old drum, whatever.
Yeah.
But then, then, you know, who knows what flower person's gonna be in charge somewhere, and then we're doing a full scope re- reclaiming of whatever that is for millions, because we didn't do a twenty-one E the right way. That's all, a- and we own it, right, once this is ours.
We own it.
All those headaches come with it, just like anyone else, whether it's Gil's Autobody with his headache that he fixed up from the previous owner.
Right.
You know, it's, this is stupid, just do the twenty-one E the right way. It's only a couple of grand, you know, I, I could see if it was thirty or forty or fifty thousand, and, and they pay, they got, they got five million dollars for the property, they can do a twenty-one E.
So anyways, they will be, uh, we did receive an email that, uh, they would be reaching out. I did give them the name of one person who did work on that facility
He visited me too.
when he was younger, and said that he could identify the different areas, he could identify the area where the tanks were.
Yeah.
Now, they could've been removed, we don't know, because there is no permits were ever granted, no permits for removal.
Before permitting, wasn't it, back then?
Well, I think back then, a lot of people just did things.
Right.
And that's what I explained to the gentleman doing the twenty-one E, that, uh, unfortunately, years ago, everybody was a volunteer. We had a part-time building inspector, we had, we still have a call fire department, we do have, uh, finally, a full-time chief and, uh, some full-time firefighter paramedics, but I said, before that, it was all volunteers. Anyways, I just wanted to make sure you were fully aware of that, Mr. Chairman.
Well, yeah, it's supposed to be a full twenty-one E anyway, so I wouldn't have been signing that if that came in front of us, that it was a the other version of it, I mean, that's stupid. That's embarrassing that we do all that works, raise, raise this money one way or the other,